Mr. Berger, the U.S. Census. You have the floor.
Thank you. Give you a couple of things to look over to do this first.
Thank you.
I have a point of introduction just because I'm new. And I'll give you a little bit of history with the normal also. So into May of last year is when I came on board with the Census. My background is I had a little bit of time with FEMA, spending from the August day of rain of 18, where in certain areas of the north central part of the state at five feet of rain. That was an interesting experience, let me tell you. Talk about bureaucracy there, that's ridiculous. But from that point, I transitioned over to Census. My background is that of 25 years in public education, dealing with economics and government, teaching at Royal Sock High School in Lakeview County. December of last year, we had a change in leadership within Census. And then locally into Valentine's Day, there was another change from what's called a partnership specialist, an individual who did past tense represent in service Clinton County, as well as a little bit of center in Huntington County. So my coordinator basically reached out to about three of us and said, "You guys figure out who's doing what where when." In that I have had already 11 counties in north central Portland State, it was a natural fit for me to just say, "I'm thinking that's Clinton." Because coming from Lakeview County, it's a natural flow. So my task very simply as partnership specialist is to outreach, engage, update, and say, "The Census is here," as we mentioned. I have not gotten mine yet, knock on wood. It should come in a couple of days. But the basic part of the Census, it is all of nine questions this year. Super simple. One of the things that I wanted to draw attention to for yourselves was on the, in the packet, there are two maps. The one that's in the staple component there would be one of the bigger things. And that's going to illustrate to you the, what's called low response scores for Clinton County. It's a very simple page like this. Just shows Clinton County. So what we're looking at on this particular map, illustrating for the rest of us also, Clinton County has three different regions that are highlighted in blue. Blue is not good. Blue means that those regions that are in blue are high non-responsives. Looking to the center right would be Lock Haven City itself. The zone that we are is the darkest blue. The other two blues are about the same. Where Lock Haven University is and up in the northern part of the county where Renova, and I believe it's up there too. Regardless. But, okay, so moving to. This is off of what's called ROM. So if one goes onto the Census website and just types in in the search bar with nitrogen glasses, ROM, R-O-A-M, and then you type in a zip code, it brings you up to the particular page. What it illustrates is very simply the expected non-responsive for Clinton County. It's not good. Basically, for Lock Haven itself, it's basically saying that one in four are not going to respond to the Census. That's extraordinarily odd. It's not the worst that I've seen. In Williamsport, there were zones that are 35% non-responsive. So my outreach and my goal, being on board now for Clinton County, is to make as many inroads as I possibly can, looking at the housing areas, you know, where these low-income families are, looking at the affordable housing programs out there, and talking to the directors there. How can we educate the folks and make sure that they understand that this is not the invasive Census of 2010 and 2000, where it took an hour and a half? That this is for their particular benefit. In the, one of the pages also I have on is a packet for you is a newsletter that I put together on a monthly basis. The newsletter basically highlights a little bit of Corona. Basically, can't talk about that. But it also says that the Census is in fact nine questions. It is five minutes, as our CDV person has already done hers. Congratulations. So let me give you a couple timelines here. Where we are right now, the Census is being mailed out. It is going to be out, it was arriving March 12th, and it will be arriving in 145 million post offices, mailing addresses between now and the end of this week. I haven't gotten one yet. I will. There are three different modes to respond to the Census. This is what's going to make this important for the community. Not only because of what's going on in the world, but because of the ease of it. So way number one, and I think from a family business. Way number one is the old paper and pencil. Fill in bubbles, stick it back in the mail, coffee goes, you're done. My mom is that way. She is 85. She is not good with technology, cell phone. She has problems turning on. And her computer, if it doesn't do the right thing when she first turns on, forget it, it's the computer's fault. So mom's going to do it the old paper pencil way. Secondarily, would be telephone. You will have an 800 number to dial into, and you will actually talk to somebody, and they'll work you through the nine questions. Third way is the internet that Angela is obviously working on. That's a good way to do it because it puts it right into the database immediately. Once it's in there, and once you do either the telephone or the internet, you will get a confirmation. Says, "Angela, congratulations." Just like paying your PPNL bill or something like that on one. The idea therefore is to do it as efficiently as possible, to get rid of these low response scores. Now, transitioning into that, the timeline would be ideally to have the public do the census and complete the census sometime between now and tax time. That's a nice, easy days for people to remember. After tax time, what's going to happen will be that Census is hiring, has hired, will be training, what are called MQAs, mobile questionnaire assistants. Those folks are going to go out into the community, into designated locations or agreed locations, and basically say, "Okay, here we are. What can we do to help you do the census, complete the census? Engage, educate, be active." So afternoon, I'm going to be working with YMCA, also with Salvation Army, and also with the library, even though they're closed. So those are all things that we're working together to try and figure out where the best means to attract people once this whole thing breaks, to get people out and engaged. And this is not just an April thing. The MQAs will also be going into April and May and June. So I'm looking forward three months to figure out where all the events are going to be that people will have opportunity to contribute. Thinking more rural than I am Lock Haven City. In terms of Lock Haven University, that becomes a big thing. The deans of the schools have already completed their group course census. So they are about 90% complete with their engagement, despite the fact that the kids are now off campus and probably not coming back. So positive to Lock Haven University. They have made the initiative, they have taken the guidance, and put things together in a very quick expedient fashion. That should help the Lock Haven community, especially the other side of the city, where the rate's around 20, 28% or so percent of non-response. Last weekend of the month, there will be a faith organization weekend, which I am going to be outreach to a couple of the churches, a couple of the faith-based institutions in the county to also make some initiatives of support. The idea is to have trusted voices to make sure that people are engaged. Somebody who they know in the community, not me, because I'm just passing through and doing my job. The goal very simply and timeline is the Census will be active through the end of July. That would be the initial self-response period, although the sooner the better. After tax time, these MQA folks will be taking guidance where the public is not responding immediately. So it's going to turn from a statistical basis to a live mode type of response. And that's where we really get engaged, and that's where I'll probably be out more because I'll be tapped out to do a lot more hands-on and working with not only yourselves, but the Lock Haven City CCC and the general businesses in the area and everything. Beyond that, that's the update that I'd like to offer for you. The newsletter, the first page of the letter is just the cover letter that I put together. The other pages are visuals for you to refer to. Newsletter is something that, again, I put out. It's a personal thing that I update every month. I've changed the format only because of coronavirus out. It does mean, and it does really, if you flip the idea here, there's a golden window here. Despite the fact that, you know, in 2010, 2000, the numerator grew out, this is an opportunity for people to self-respond. They can do this without talking to an numerator, an MQA person. They can do it at home. And not worry about the virus that's reportedly out and affecting thousands of people. So that would be the understanding and the goal.
Can we put this on our Facebook?
By all means. It would be easy to huck it for cards and information, you know, into this. But I can email a whole bunch of stuff out. I've got a good repertoire of material that can be added to it, just in terms of PDFs that Census has put out, but the stuff that I have, I'm taking it from the Census website. I'm not, you know, building anything, highlighting anything,附表里 on it. It's just, here's the facts of what can be done. Make a short sweep.
Also, Ken, I had a similar presentation at the Planning Directors Association and did send out a packet of stuff in that presenter to Maria. And I think she put, she was going to do like my page every so often, put it out there.
Questions? Or from the audience also?
Do you know when they'll start contacting OKVs?
MQAs.
Oh, I'm sorry, MQAs.
MQAs will be offered like particular jobs.
Yes.
Applicants. Some of them already have been. Pool of applicants for this area. I don't want to say Clinton County, but I mean, Lakeview County also that I'm primarily in. Some have been contacted already. The applicant pool will be closing probably within a week or so because we'll have to screen them, we'll get a call from State College. And then we'll be tasked out to say, "Okay, you've been offered a job. Here's the pay grade, do you accept? Here's where your training starts today." And it will be in Clinton County. Each county has their own location. One of the locations, plural. Two weeks ago, they had one at City Hall. I know that because I was working with the CCC out there. Not quite sure where they're dealing. So I'm, you can basically say there's two different lanes that are going along right now. One is my lane, talking to yourselves and engaging and making sure that we all understand what's going to happen in the timeline. The other lane is the training of the MQAs numerators. And then we have the numerators that are going to be brought onboard. They probably won't be active out in the field until after tax time. Into May and June is when they'll pick up the stragglers. And that'll be also based on a live assessment of information coming in.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Berger, my neighbor was trying to fill out the Census online, and the code that was sent in the mailing wasn't working for them. And so after re-entering it a couple of times, still not working. Is there troubleshooting or a way to contact someone if you're trying to do it?
There isn't, you don't remember. It should be in that packet. If the code does not work, to my understanding, they can just go onto the Census site and just fill it in without the code.
Okay.
It'll just like, here's your, you're just a resident, here's the address, and it'll still go in the same format. To my understanding, the code just unlocks the door. But, I've had the same question from Tidewater County Commissioners. Again, to my understanding, all what needs to do, even at these MQA locations that would be mobile around county, if people don't have that particular code with them, and they say, "Ah, jeez, I forgot to do the census. Yeah, let's do it right now." All they need to know is their address.
Thank you.
I have one question. Are Amish communities in three, four, five townships of the county, all the southern and western, have had a population explosion between any twenty ten and now? And I'm just curious, what's your, do you have a specific type of outreach that you go to them and need to get cooperation?
Having done a census, this is my first one. So can't go there, can't go back historically, but I would believe you that the numerators, the MQA folks, they'll obviously go to that community into April and May because we're not going to get the response.
Right, they don't use the internet.
So that'll be the straggler, the late filings that's going to come in toward the end of the whole process. But into spring is going to come, and when it goes, we'll be done.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Give you business cards so that we can have the line of communication available, and, you know, it's going to come out any time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. My name's Mike Flanagan, I'm with Cleveland County Economic Partnership. We talked a couple of weeks ago about the Lamar Township Business Park, which is currently under a Keystone Opportunities at KOZ. That's going to run out December 31st of this year. We were looking to see if the three taxing bodies would approve a seven-year extension on the open vacant land stolen by the partnership. That would include lots five, six, and nine, approximately 50 acres. The other entities out there that have purchased the lots and during the KOZ time will start paying taxes as of January 1st, 2020. But we would ask for the extension on the other three to try to help us maybe get somebody out there. So we're doing this kind of early, but we're also doing it because if we get a prospect, and we actually have one right now, but if we have a prospect, we can tell him or her that, you know, we're in the process of applying for a seven-year extension, which would help, perhaps, help land them. Please report that Lamar Township a couple of weeks ago and the Keystone Central School District last week did approve the resolutions that are needed. So we need all three taxing bodies to do this, and plus the state to say okay to it too, obviously. So that, I mean, I could probably go a little bit longer, but that's in a nutshell about what we're trying to do.
It will be on you, Jen, Thursday.
Okay. Thank you.
County planning staff.
Hi, I'm first, I have a request from Cedar Cog for you to write a letter of support. This is in relationship to the joint application to the Appalachian Regional Commission Power Grant 2020 program for helping with our broadband build-out. In brief, there's $2 million in R-CAP funds that have been set aside for Clinton County. And that would be matched for this R-CAP request to the federal government, the Appalachian Regional Commission is a federal body, but all of its funding is targeted to counties in Appalachia. So the application that we would put in would be, Union County would be the lead applicant. And that's what your letter says, you're happy with Union County being the lead applicant. That just means the funding will flow through their books and all that our only involvement would be processing of invoices that are being paid in our county, approving them. But the money's only going to flow through Union County's books. And also, in this letter, you're recognizing that Cedar Cog will be the acting grant administrator. And there is an administrative component to this grant, so they would be collecting those funds and really no adding one company to the county. But our responsibilities would be very tiny in this, we basically will just have to respond to messages and questions. And so that's what this letter that they're asking you to sign, that's the content of it. And I wanted to look forward on a conversation I had with Mike Fisher and Scott Kramer, the two Cedar Cog guys who are coordinating this, about our particular project details. If you recall, there were three project areas. Western Clinton County, based in Renova, centered on Buckdale Medical Center. Sugar Valley, centered in Loganton, you know, 880 Strip. And the McElhatten Industrial Park area. So that was the information that was gathered by this consultant from Ohio, based on surveys that were taken. And we surveyed responses on his conversations. Mike and Scott went up to Buckdale last week, and they did a whole tour of Western County, trying to talk to businesses and asking, "What's the demand? What's the need here?" Everybody's served by Comcast up there, including Buckdale Medical Center. What currently runs Buckdale now is cable, Comcast cable, not fiber. So they don't have high-speed internet, they have internet service. And apparently Comcast had been in conversation with Buckdale Medical Center about getting fiber. And the price tag to Buckdale was a little too high. It's just between $20,000 and $30,000, but that's the cash they would have had to put in. So Buckdale said, "Let's wait and see about this grant application." But Comcast is interested and motivated to put in that fiber. So this is all contingent if Buckdale agrees to this, but the prospect would be to do that project at a cost of $20,000 to $30,000, which would be matching funds for Comcast's money. And then the Loganton Sugar Valley area, they met with Nicholas Meads. And Nicholas Meads desperately wants high-speed internet, and so does everyone in that valley, really. Everyone who uses internet is unhappy with the quality of it. And so we do have solid cost estimates and materials needed for that section. So their proposal is to do just that tiny project in Renova and the Logan Township, Loganton area with this project. And they had conversations with First Quality in McElhatten. And I don't know where the data came from that said that service was poor, but First Quality told them they're totally happy with what they got, and they're served by Comcast as well. So that's where it stands right now. Our project would have shrunk from what was originally proposed and still provide decent service to both areas. And they felt that the outlining areas around Western Clinton, Comcast apparently has a whole lot of fiber up there that our consultant wasn't able to learn through the process that he went through. And they feel that the next step after putting fiber into Buckdale would just be contacting the local internet service providers and saying, "Listen, this is how much fiber is up there. If you don't come in and provide that service." And he felt that that wouldn't even need to be included in this request. So I think it's a really nice compromise from where we started out. And there's no cost to the county to do this application, zero cost. And I would propose that Carrie Keppler be the grant lead on it, just to be the liaison, Carrie and myself, to be the liaison between Cedar Cog and the county.
Thank you. Courthouse renovation contracts, okay?
So last Tuesday, myself, Tom Powers, and Ernie, and maintenance all met with the two contractors to do a pre-concharming walkthrough of the courthouse. They'll be ready to start on Monday, March 23rd. Due to some of their previous scheduling, some taking off for vacation, they haven't been, they'll get their contracts back to us this time until this week, so that'll be on the agenda for Thursday. And they'll pretty much be ready to start on Monday. It'll be coordinating with maintenance and IT to get all the wire running through the courtroom. The whole second floor's got to be closed off from the lobby and courtroom one and people still be able to come through the downstairs, which they'll be working on off-hours, so they won't be disturbing or interrupting the normal flow of the building.
Hopefully get those contracts by Thursday. 2019 ESG budget revision request.
Good morning. Good morning, Eric. Jeff Rich has put a request to us to change the budget on the 2019 Urgency Solution Grant, move $6,000 from homeless prevention rental assistance to homeless prevention financial assistance. The $6,000 they're moving wasn't in the budget to begin with?
He had put it as a project, we didn't put any money into the line item for financial assistance. But the contract allows money to be moved from one section to another.
So this is not additional money, this is just a moving of money?
Yeah. It requires a resolution, just requires a letter signed by you to DCP.
On the agenda for Thursday.
Yep.
County issues. Response to the current virus issue. A partial response was put out on Thursday. I hope everyone saw that. We are limiting now no outside organizations able to use our buildings effective as of Friday until further notice. We are in the process. And at 8:45 this morning, we thought we had our additional response nailed down until we got an email at that time from our county solicitor. And now we have to go back and work through some verbiage that he's not satisfied. Have an additional update. And this is going to be a living document. As everybody knows, this changes on a daily and sometimes an hourly basis. So what we put out today may change tomorrow. That's something we're going to have to work with as we go through it. We are in the process of screening people at our entrances before we're going to start questioning people as to their travel experiences, or the ill, and so forth. Try to limit who comes into our buildings. Our cleaning staff has taken on some additional responsibilities on doorknobs and light switches, anything anybody touches. So I guess all I can say is we're all aware of it. Let's be vigilant on our own. Do what you need to do, carry your hand sanitizer, wash your hands. We're in this together, so let's do the best we can.
If I may, Chairman. That's why I brought my laptop this morning, working with our solicitor, to try to iron out some of the policies that we're trying to enact and make some of those changes so that hopefully by the end of today we can get our official policy response out to all of the employees here within the county so that they understand where we're at today and knowing that that could change tomorrow. So this, I'm not trying to be rude to our guests, but just trying to stay on top of it so that we can accomplish these things before the end of the day.
I understand that, please.
Thank you.
You have the same vote, people, I'm traveling five different counties.
Yes.
Agenda items for Thursday. We have board appointments, the sewer authority from Castania Township. We're going to be opening some bids around four.
Three different projects. One is the radiant heat repairs at the prison. The second is the flooring and tile needed to finish the job at the third floor of the garden building. And the third one is a replacement of the panic button warning system that we currently have in place and actually expanding it so that all three of our buildings are covered. Those bids are due by noon Wednesday, and then opened on Thursday at your meeting.
We have a proclamation for the safe digging month. Julie Brennan will be here to announce the partnership tourism committee recreational grants that were decided upon a week or so ago. Format contract, changing format vendors. That will be acted upon on Thursday. Agreement on the IGT will be acted upon on Thursday. Contact Sesculhanna County Thursday. And there may or may not be personnel items that will be acted upon on Thursday. And I, under the arrangements I already announced about the meeting schedules in our buildings. And Mr. Snyder, do you want to say anything about the CCAT Spring Conference? And Mr. Snyder, do you wanna say about the CCAP Spring Conference?
Just that it's also been canceled.
The list of cancellations is almost an ongoing, every-minute thing, like every seat, several from partnerships this morning, about partnership meeting on the 18th. Wednesday, United General Meeting is being canceled. Torism meeting on the 19th is being canceled. And there's something else, the cost store that was planned for April the 3rd is being postponed, will be run at a later date. It just keeps growing. Schedules, yeah?
Of course, a little on it, except for some internal meetings that you have this morning regarding merit hire, that is also gonna be on the agenda for Thursday, we talked about it last Monday. And I believe that this children is wanting to make sure that you understood what was all involved in signing on to that system. This afternoon's staff, is that still ongoing?
Cancelled.
Cancelled. Didn't know that one. I saw that the Housing Coalition is still on for 9:00 AM tomorrow, but the Housing Authority meeting's been canceled. I don't know about Advocates.
Cancelled.
Cancelled. There is a phone meeting that was, is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon with company calls of my class. That's at 2:00, so I guess that will still be ongoing. An internal meeting that Angela is having with the user group for our August N-Worm software, and I think that's at 3:00 PM, still ongoing. The workforce development canceled. I don't know about Joiner Executive Committee.
Haven't heard anything.
That is at 1:00 on Wednesday. Oh, planning, I guess, is still on.
Planning is canceled because there's nothing for the agenda.
Okay.
Nothing was presented to go before the planning board.
And now you just told me that the membership meeting is canceled? Didn't know that.
Yes.
Torism canceled. We will have this Commissioners' meeting on Thursday, we haven't had one for two weeks, so as you alluded to, there's quite a few agenda items. The C J A P meeting for 1:00 Thursday is canceled. A ribbon cutting that First Commonwealth was holding in Renova, the bank, is canceled. The Conservation District, to my knowledge, is still on for 3:00 PM on Thursday. I haven't heard anything there. There's a meeting with a gentleman who I believe is running for the seat. He asked to meet with you at 10:00 AM on Friday, Chris Dush. And you have a meeting, to my knowledge, not canceled, with a woman from West Penn Power at 1:00 on Friday. And as far as I know, the Court Security Advisory Board meets at 2:30. Jeff, you're on that on Friday. And we weren't going to have a work session on Monday because of the
Spring Cap.
CCAP conference was gonna be there, so as far as I have, we have not advertised there was a meeting, so I guess there's no work session on Monday, the 23rd.
Jan, I'm not sure if it's on your list, but the Rec Authority will be to Wednesday, the 18th, at 6:00, and I have not been told that that's not happening.
No.
But I can let you know if it is not.
As I said before, this is an ongoing cancellation schedule, it just keeps building. At this time, there are no plans for Clinton County to close. The only way this county would close is if it comes out of Harrisburg, the government says all county offices are closed. Other than that, Clinton County will remain open for business. We're encouraging anyone who can do their business through internet or emails or the post office. Don't need to come in to pay your taxes, you can put it in an envelope and send them to us. Anything you can do to limit travel around, I think will be beneficial for everyone involved. So as I said, this county will remain open, there are no plans to close the county, the only way that would happen is getting from Governor Wolf. That's all I have on Commissioner comments. Andrew?
Ditto.
Guess the other thing I'm wondering is, as you said, and I agree, things are changing on a daily basis, it's not even sooner than that, so if it would be in the best interest of the county to have a work session next Monday, I think we didn't have enough time to advertise it.
Yeah, I think that would probably be a good idea, to keep everybody up to it.
Let's see what happens.
Thank you. Public comments. Yes?
Last week, I attended a prison board meeting, as you know, and I noticed a couple of discouraging things. Number one, there was no public participation in this meeting, there was no public comment section. That is not a civil issue, it's actually a criminal issue, and it's a violation of the Sunshine Act.
We're looking at that.
I'm sorry?
So we are looking at that.
Thank you.
That was recognized.
Okay.
Sorry for the overlook.
Thank you.
That was realized after the meeting was over.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
The broadband initiative was a huge bullet point for politicians, but we also have Elon Musk right now. And Elon Musk invented the Tesla. He has launched 4,000 satellites into our orbit, and up to 12,000, that will provide internet service to the entire world. So I'm kind of questioning why we're dumping all this money into a broadband initiative when we may be already able to participate in the service while we already launch at the end of the summer.
Well, I guess this thing has been going on for some time now, and it's finally coming to an end, so I can't answer your question because I don't know.
Well, I think it's, we are not dumping money into the broadband initiative, as was stated today.
Just state everyone, is what I'm referring to as well.
Right. And I suppose there's probably some regulatory things. I mean, Elon Musk is a private businessman, entrepreneur, billionaire, trillionaire person, whereas with the broadband initiatives that we're working on through planning, there's gonna be more oversight and more direct approach to how we go about it, and I mean, that's all I can really figure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm gonna, I'm kinda technologically illiterate on some of these things, I'll be the first to admit that.
Just something to think about.
Yes. Yes. I vibrate about Mr. Muskin or Mr. whatever his name is. I just call him Tesla, is that's how I think.
Yeah.
I know the Tesla, so that's how I recognize him. Yes, it's, as our planning director stated, they've been around talking to different areas, some have internet connections, some don't, some that do have and aren't satisfied with it, so I don't know what the answers are, I guess if it all comes down to it, we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, Mr. Richard?
If you enter into a contract with Sesquahanna, what they call themselves these days, it will be the 16th time
Yes, sir.
that the county has done that. 2009, I was told by the then Board of Commissioners, well, we're gradually weaning ourselves away from this service. It's an extremely long weaning.
Well, I think from my observation, and this is strictly my personal observation, when that organization was brought on board, I used to see the individual here almost every day. And I think the weaning process, again, my personal opinion, was not to completely dissolve our relationship with Sesquahanna, but to limit the hours in which Sesquahanna is used, is what my understanding of that was. And that is what, still what we are working toward, only using them on the items that we need them to be used upon. This contract did actually expire at the end of December, and we then worked out a six-month extension to take it to the end of June. My concern coming in was that it ended, the contract ended at the end of Commissioners' term. And that bothered me, because if the next Board of Commissioners would come in and that contract ends, the Commissioners then decide they don't want to do any further business with Sesquahanna, then who goes back and does the actual year-end reconciliations and so forth? That is why we pushed for the contract to go from July 1st to June 30th instead of a January 1st to December 31st issue, so that whatever happens coming down the road doesn't end at the end of Commissioners' term, so that the county isn't left hanging as to who goes back and actually does the reconciliations. So that's where we are with that particular issue.
Could I interject a little?
Yes.
And also, you know, in those years since 2009, the accounting requirements for the audit have continuously changed, been added and compounded, so that some of the things that we are required to do before the auditors even get our information, really do require a CPA to take care of those schedules and reports that they need to use, whoever our auditor, outside auditors are. Would you agree, Michelle and Rita? The Gatsby rules just keep compounding and growing each year, the general accounting, government accounting, principal.
Well, the whole of which regulation is written in English. English is my native language, if you have any difficulty understanding it. I have to defer to your judgment on the value of this organization to your side of the table. To my side of the table, their work product has always been poor, and I have tried year after year after year to get a decent, understandable description of the budget process. Every year, I get 10 more appointments than the other nine.
And that is also being looked at. Richard, we've got several of those issues from other counties that are far better than ours, and we intend on pressing Sesquahanna for a likewise description of our budget process.
I agree with that.
Anything else? We'll see you on Thursday morning.